Your first memory in life.
Oh.
Do you, what, what's the earliest thing in your life that you can remember?
That is really good. And I thought of that.
And I know it's been a minute. I mean, we're just talking about our age. It's been a minute.
I remember being in our house in Carrollton, in the kitchen. And mama probably washed, given me a bath in the sink.
Wow.
I'm, I'm, there's something like that.
Right on. Yeah, that's, that's back there.
Yeah.
That's back there because we don't use the sink for bathtub.
No, we don't. And if you saw how fat I was, that was a big thing.
Welcome to SalinaRadio.com. I'm your host, Ron Lyons. And if you think that Salina, Texas is just a quiet little sleepy town with absolutely nothing going on, then you better buckle up because Salina Radio is about to launch.
Three, two, one.
Guys, welcome to another episode of SalinaRadio.com. And I've got somebody today on the show that just, they literally made me laugh so much recording this episode. As a matter of fact, there were a couple of times when I just lost all my composure laughing and had to just kind of stop. And I left a little bit of that in there so that you could see exactly how things worked out between me and my guest on this episode of SalinaRadio.com. Now, this is the very last of our candidate interviews for this season. I know. Are you just about as relieved as I am? It's been quite the season. Let me tell you, it has been exhausting. This has been an unbelievable season. But you know what? I'm going out on a, on a big high note. Because today's guest is Jeff Gravely. And I mean, Jeff is awesome. He's running for school board. He's hilarious. He's funny. He's all that stuff. And you're going to love this episode. You're going to love sitting there and listening to this crazy sense of humor that he's got. So guys, sit back, relax. And let's hop into my interview with Jeff Gravely. Guys, I'm here right now with Jeff Gravely. And if you know that name, it's probably because you've been driving around town and seeing his signs all over the place. And no, he's not advertising a business. He's advertising himself because he is running for school board right here in Salina, Texas. Jeff, how are you doing today, man?
I'm very blessed and I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you, Ron.
Absolutely. And we're going to get a little bit into who Jeff is, what he likes, what he doesn't like, what his favorite things to do are. You're going to basically give you kind of a behind the scenes look at Jeff Gravely. Jeff, you okay with that?
I'm, I'm in, man. Let's do it.
It's going to be a lot of fun because I happen to know a few things about Jeff and his, his motorcycle that he likes to ride. He likes to paraglide down in the great, now I'm just making all that up. But he is, he is a very interesting person. I think you're going to really enjoy this. So first of all, Jeff, would, tell us about what you're running for. So it's school board. What, what seat?
Place three. I'm running for my fourth term as a Salina School Board of Trustees. Been doing this for 12 years now and wanted to continue to serve and give back to the community that has brought so many special memories to my family and myself.
And I know you're, so you're actually running against Melissa Cromwell. And I guess she, she threw her name in this go round. And I understand that you guys are actually friends.
Absolutely. Absolutely. She came up to me, we were at the, we were at a golf tournament in the fall and it might've been, I can't remember the golf tournament. I remember we were in Frisco or McKinney. And she said, hey, I'm thinking about running for school board. I said, that'd be great, man. I'm support you. How can I help? She goes, well, but I think I'm running against you. I said, what?
How did that feel whenever she said that?
I had mad respect for her for saying that and for telling me that. It was very honorable of her to say that and I respect her. And I told her, I said, why, why are you running against me? Run against somebody else? You know, being, being transparent. She says, well, you don't have kids in the school and I do. And I want people on the board that's got kids in the school. And I said, okay, I understand that. My first thought is Board of Regents don't have kids that go to those colleges and they're on the Board of Regents, but that's fine. But you know, hey, but the, the fact that she's wanting to serve and, and do something special, to continue to do something special for the community. I applaud that. And I have, I have a lot of respect for Melissa and I like her. And you know what? If, if she is so fortunate and she wins the election, I think she would be a good school board member. I really do. That being said, with the growth of Salina and the impending growth that we have coming, the exponential growth we have coming. I've served for 12 years and experience really does matter. That being said, you've got, after this election, you'll have three members on the school board that have one year or less of experience. If she is, is, is voted in, you'll have four members, a majority of the board member that will have one year or less experience on the board. I think it's imperative with the exponential growth that we have, that you have the experience in that seat. And as I was telling you, Ron, before we started, I debated whether or not to even run, you know, late last fall. And then we had two people that were on the school board move out of the district. So we had to fill those vacancies. One of those vacancies is in, on the other place that driver and Hoag are running for to fill an open spot. So, you know, Melissa's running against me. You know, in short, she would be, she's a great candidate. She's a good friend. I like her. I respect her. I think that we need the experience and that's why I decided to continue serving for the school district.
So you were thinking, you were contemplating at some point recently that, hey, you know what I mean? I even run this cycle. And then you looked into you and saw that we're going to lose some experience.
Absolutely.
And so you're like, okay, no, I have to do this.
Yeah. I need to continue to serve and try to help keep, keep the values, keep the traditions that we have in Salina. Because when we moved here, I'm from Gunner. I moved here, I think we, we bought our place in 97. We built and moved in, I think it was two, not started building in 99, moved in in 2000. And I moved here because growing up in this area, it was always a very special place to me. Cause I, I remember, I can't remember the year, but it was probably 72, 73. I remember coming with my mother downtown Salina and opened up my first bank account. Jane Huddleston was the-
Name that I, that I'm familiar with.
Jane Huddleston wrote, filled out my bank, little booklet that she got, said, here's how much money's in your bank. You know, and I remember it was handwritten. I still have that.
Wow.
And so I've been around this area my entire life. As I, as I grew older, I would come to the square with my grandmother and we'd go to Willie Green's furniture shop.
Right.
So I've been around this place my entire life. And when I, when, when I, we got married, my wife and I, when we got married, we wanted to settle down and we wanted to raise our kids in a place that, in a place like I grew up. Is I told my kids, if you do something wrong, I'm going to know about it before you get home.
Right on.
And I wanted, I wanted them to have the same experience that I did, growing up a small town with values, with Christian beliefs and the traditions and everybody's looking out for one another. And that's another reason that I chose to serve on the school board, because I wanted to keep those traditions and values. And the fact that we pray at our functions, I will die on that hill. That is, that's, that's non-negotiable to me.
So a very, very big deal to you. And, and it's because of this community and its roots and its traditions and its values.
And its Christian beliefs.
And, and would you, would you say that right now that it's, and we're not going to get a whole lot off into politics and things like that. But just a little bit, since you, since you mentioned that, are we under attack right now within our schools? Like I personally believe we are. I think it's a, it's a whole different world out there. And I believe that we are absolutely under attack. I think our values, our morals, everything right now is in danger. How, how do you feel about that?
I don't, I don't know. I think the word attack might be strong, but I think our, I think our country is. And will it eventually infiltrate into our community? Quite possibly. And it's, and is it doing so slowly? I do believe that. Now, you know, is it slow or is it a full-on attack? I don't know that I can answer that. But you keep Jesus in the middle of everything, you'll be fine. And you love everybody and you know.
Be a good person.
Yeah. And if, and if you and I have different political differences, let's talk about it.
So not beat each other up.
No. And that's, and that's another thing is that, you know.
But that is what's going on a lot out there right now. And I, I have this fear that a lot of people who look into Salina and they say, you know what? Small town, small town values. It's got all these great things, everything that we love about Salina. But if you take a look at some of the politics that take place right now, it's ugly.
Well, and that's, that's, you've said that very well because I've been recently informed that, well, you align here or you align here on the school board. I don't align with anybody. I align with that school district and with my faith in Jesus Christ. And I align with what I believe. I, as far as the political environment, the local political environment, I have no alliances. You know, and I've been, I've been thrown, my perception is I've been thrown into that and that's not true. Just because I put a sign here or a sign there, it doesn't mean anything. It just means that that's where I put a sign. That being said, I, I don't have, I align with the betterment of our school districts, our students and our teachers. And doing everything I can to make sure that they are protected and they have the best environment in which they can have.
Well, and unfortunately it is very, very polarized out there right now within Salina, within our community. And so it is possible that if you get a sign in this location and that happens to be the location of some other political candidate, probably for city council, then you're going to be seen as, oh, you must be in that group. And what you're saying right now is you're not in any of those groups.
No, sir. I'm, I'm not in a group whatsoever. I know all the people that are running for city council and that, that's, that's fine. I am on, I align with the Salina Independent School District and I align with my own values and my own beliefs.
Yep. I like it. I like it very much. That's well said. And that may be about as far as we get into politics. So I don't know.
That's, now that's fine.
We could, we could venture back just a little bit. So I want to learn more about you though. So you said something earlier and I can't remember your exact words. You didn't say I'm a cheap date. You said I'm low.
Oh, we were, we were talking about, I don't know what we were talking about. I said, I'm low rant.
Low rant. And as we're sitting here right now, I see that you've got a lemon sparkling water in front of you. And it's a, it's a Kirkland brand. Okay. So, so not, it's not a, it's not a name brand per se. So would you say that that's kind of, is that, is that, is that who you are? Are you kind of a, are you careful? You know, economically, budget-wise, are you that sort of thing? How would you describe yourself?
So there's, there's cheap and there's frugal. And so there's, there's two different things. So my wife and I, my wife brought it, started it and I'm, God bless her for doing it. But we have taught Dave Ramsey's Financial Peace for many, many years in our church. We go to First Baptist Salina. And we just, we were conscious about what we, I don't like to waste anything.
Absolutely.
My dad was, my dad who passed away last year was raised, he was raised through the depression. And he got it through his grandparents who raised him. We, you know, I've, I've got a bucket of nuts and bolts because, because daddy did. And so I don't have to go down to Ace Hardware to get, you know, get a, you know, get a replacement. Yeah. I'm just, I don't like to waste things.
I understand that. It's probably why my wife thinks that I'm a hoarder or a pack rat or something. Cause I do the exact same thing. I was raised the same way.
So you, you bring up the, the Kirkland sparkling water. I, I do, I do have, and I'm going to blame, my wife and I have one thing that we, there's always in our house. We always have sparkling water in our house.
Wow.
Yeah. It's almost an addiction. It's the only addiction I've got. That sparkling water, I've got to have it. Yeah.
You know what? If you're going to have an addiction, that's not a bad one.
Yeah. It's not a bad one.
Not a bad one at all. So, and you've been in and around the Salina area for gosh, many years, many, many years. What is so amazing and awesome about Salina?
The people.
The people.
The people are genuine. They're, they're nice. They're honest. They have good Christian values. They're like-minded and they're conservative. And I like that. You know, there's, you've been here a long time too. We embrace the growth and there's a reason these people are moving here. A guy told me, this was funny. He said, hey, Jeff, I've got your campaign slogan. He said, you moved here because of me. And what he's saying was, these people that are moving in are moving here because of what we've created. And my response to that is, well, all I'm trying to do is carry on the traditions and what the people before us created. The Huddelstons, Mr. Carey, Donald Hamm, you know, I'm going to forget. There's so many people's names are running through my mind, but that helped create this place to be the special place that it is. And we want to continue that. And, and so, you know, I spent like one or two years in Frisco when my wife and I just got married. And we were, went to First Baptist Frisco and that was the, the older regime of Frisco and those, and they were Salina. I mean, it's the same values, the same everything. Well, you know, once, once that mall came in, I said, I'm getting out of here, going into a smaller town. But, but it's, it's the people that came before us that we need to honor their traditions, their values, that community and carry it on for the kid who's going into first grade right now.
I like it.
So, cause I want the kid who's in first grade right now to have as much of the similar experience as both my kids had when they went through school.
Right on.
And we might not be able to do it, but by gosh, it's not going to be because I don't try.
Sure. Sure. Absolutely. So you're very passionate about this. You love the community. And I want to ask you a couple of questions about things that you like to do around here. So do you ever, in being careful, wait, did we determine, are you frugal or cheap?
Frugal. I'm not cheap. There's, there's a few things I'll spend money on. Anything to do with hunting, I'll spend money on.
And your wife would agree with that.
Yes, she will.
So, so all right. And I have to remember that because I'm going to say that. I'm the guy that goes and buys the $7.99 shirts from Tractor Supply. And I love that. Hey, you know, it's a t-shirt. It works.
Nothing wrong with it.
So I'm frugal. I'm not cheap. I get accused of being cheap. I'm frugal.
But you'll go, but you'll go spend money on stuff that really matters to you and you want good quality. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm like, I'm leaving that part out.
I'm going to go buy a Wetherby, but I'll buy a $7.99 shirt.
Exactly. That's how it is. But you know what? It's awesome. It's good being that way. So when you come to the square, we've got Lucy's on the square and we've got Bongo Bo's and we've got Jimbo's Pizza over here. We've got all these different great places. We've got toasted walnut, so many different places. Papagayo's. Where does Jeff Gravely like to eat?
So when my wife is ever at her Bible study and I'm on my own for dinner, when I'm cooking something together, or I know she's out of town, my go-to, I will go to Tinders and get a Frito, barbecue Frito pie. Or a, what is it? The, the El Jefe.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. I just, I love Tinders. I love, I love good barbecue and I love good Mexican food.
Oh, man.
And, and toasted walnut has, and I'm, I can't remember what they call it, but it's a sandwich with the barbecue in it with a jalapeno bread, jalapeno cheese bread.
Right.
When I found that, when I found that, I learned how to make it at home as best I could.
It was, it was such an experience.
It's a game changer.
Yeah. You're like, you're, you're like, actually honey, can we get some of that, that jalapeno bread stuff?
That's all, that's all, that's all I've used the last however many years. Cause I'll, I'll haul off and make a sandwich on you.
Man, that is awesome. I love that. So, so you guys, you come down here, do you do like the Christmas thing on the square? Do you do any of the, like the Cajun fest? Do you ever do any of those events that we have out here on the square?
We'll come to, we'll come to Christmas. We'll come to Cajun fest and, you know, walk around and say hi to everybody. And we, whichever the last one we were at, I remember coming, however many years ago, you would have, it was hard to find the, the people you didn't know.
Oh, wow.
Now you're having to find, I can't see what person I knew.
Right. Yeah. So many new people.
Yeah.
And they're all coming here and it, and it is growing. And I'm of the belief that the growth is going to happen whether we like it or not. We can't build a wall around this place. We, we, we just can't do that. That's not practical. It's not going to happen. So the best thing we can do, in my opinion, is hold on to our small town values, the small town feel, and have the city grow to the best of our ability. I was a part of Frisco. I was a Frisco police officer and went through all that growth and all the stuff down there. And I kind of see everything repeating here.
Exactly.
There's certain things that they did really well, certain things that could have been done better. And so now we have this unique opportunity in Salina to do it all over again. So how do you feel about the growth?
There's a part of me that wants it to stay the same. And I know it won't. But that being said, we've got to, we got to manage, I'm going to use the word manage, air quote, manage the best we can and prepare the best we can. You know, on the school, from a school district side, we looked at the Frisco, you know, there's all these different models on how to approach that growth. The Frisco model opened 14 high schools and, you know, 87 elementaries and middle schools, whatever that is. That's not going to be our model. Our model is, we're going to, you know, expand the high school to probably a capacity of give or take 3,000. And then, you know, eventually there's going to be that second high school. As much as I have, I've fought it and fought it and I don't want a second high school. I don't want it. With our landmass, we cannot have just one high school. I don't think it's feasible. You know, do you have the Allen model? Do you have the, do you have the Frisco model? Do you have the McKinney model? Do you have the Prosper model? We're going to kind of, the Frisco model's out. We, we figured out that's not going to work. So what we're looking at is, you know, eventually having to open a second high school and, you know, try to manage the best we can.
Can I ask you a question that it may not even have an answer, but this, this just comes up from time to time. And, you know, like in Frisco, every high school, they've got their different mascot.
I know where this is going.
Mm-hmm. That's why I'm not even finishing the question.
I know where this is going. So that has not been determined. But the, the thought process is, is, and I don't understand it, Ron. I will admittedly here on the podcast, I don't understand how we do it. But that second high school keeps the same mascot. I don't understand it.
So, I mean, if we can, wow, that would be incredible. I mean, we're always and all bobcats.
Absolutely.
But that sounds tough. That's a big problem.
Yeah. I don't, Ron, I don't have that answer.
That's a big problem. It's the bobcats versus the bobcats.
But you know what? I, I was talking to, talking to somebody the other day and they brought that up. And I said, you know what? The kid that's in first grade right now, that might, that, that will go to that, or he might not even, he might not even be born yet. That goes to that other high school, it might not matter to them.
Yeah.
And you have to think that way too. I, I don't know. That, that we've got, there's a lot of people working on this. And they're going to be, it's going to be taken to committees. It's going to take parental input and figure out what's best for everybody. And you know what's sad? It's like when you resign, not everybody's going to be happy. But we got to do what the majority wants and try to make them happy and make everybody, everybody's voice does matter. You just, you might not, you might not be on the winning side.
Right. Might not be in the majority.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know.
Yep. And I understand that. It's, it's one of those things. So, so where, and let's, let's talk a little bit more about you. I want to get back to some of those things where we keep getting off into this really serious stuff, which is awesome. Because I've wondered about that forever. So it's really, really good that now I'm sitting here from a, a current board member. And it's a tough one.
It is. It is. And in every one of these decisions, either these, these decisions that are, that have a big impact on people, they're not taken lightly.
Right.
There's hours and hours and weeks and weeks of collaboration going on, discussion.
Yep. Okay. All right. So, so here, here goes some of those personal questions. Where were you born?
I was born in Carrollton, Texas.
Carrollton.
Well, that's, 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 let me back up. I was actually born in Dallas and it's on LBJ and Josie, whatever that hospital's called now. But the first six years of my life, we lived in Carrollton, Texas. My, both my mom and dad are, and, and their grandparents are from Carrollton. Third generation, second generation, and you know, the, the police center in Carrollton, the, the Gravely Center. So my whole family's from the Carrollton area and my father had, my, my father's parents had a place in Gunner. And I don't know how many acres. We had 10, 20 acres. And in 1971, we moved to Gunner. So that's where I was. I was born in Carrollton for six, you know, lived there for six years, then we moved to Gunner.
Gotcha. Well, very, very interesting. I just, I've never had anybody claim Carrollton before.
Well, yeah. I had, you know, in Gunner, I think the population sign always read 849. And I think Salina's read 12, 1250 maybe, if I'm, my memory's right.
Right, right.
26 kids in my graduating class.
Wow.
Yeah. Matter of fact, Sean Terry was, I was 85. He was 91 or 92. Yeah.
So how do you feel if you're, if you're an 85 and he's a 91 or 92? Do you, you look at him and say, kid, just a kid.
You know, behind you. Yeah. Yeah. He's, at this age, you don't, but yeah, when you think about it, you go back and think that, yeah.
Cause back then, that, that's, that would have been the difference in middle school and high school.
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah. He, he wasn't even a school, when I graduated, he moved in, if my memory serves me correctly, he moved in after I, or was already attending college.
Wow. Yeah. Wow. Unbelievable. That's really, really cool. So did you attend university?
Yeah. I went to the University of North Texas.
Okay.
Matter of, matter of fact, and you'll, this, you'll, this will ring a bell for you. I went to the University of North Texas for, started in 85. My plan was to go into sports medicine and be a, get into sports medicine. And Dan Christie and Dan Christie's land, so he, he was friends of our family. And he knew I wanted to go to the University of Texas because my dad went to University of Texas as a pharmacist. And so since I was knee-high to a horn frog, I was University of Texas.
Right.
That was, that's always been my school.
Right.
Even though I didn't attend there. So Dan Christie was friends, friends with Fred Akers. And I was going to get on that training staff.
That's awesome.
And I was going to live my dream.
Right.
Got to the University of North Texas, got into fraternity and said, here I am, boys.
That's so awesome. So I also did the UNT thing. So.
We might've been at the same time.
You never know. We might've been. So did, did you actually live on campus or did you never?
For one year.
And where did you live on campus? You were at Kerr and I was at the College Inn.
Lucky.
Yep. It was so awesome. It was the best ever.
Those, those who know what we're saying knows that Ron was lucky.
Absolutely. Yeah. It was, uh, we kind of had the whole animal house thing going over there. It was, it was fun. I had, I had a great college experience. So it was fantastic. I wouldn't trade for it. So good stuff. So you, you end up doing that. And did you ever think through those early days like that, hey, one day I'm going to be on the school board?
You know, not at that time, but growing up, my father was on, was a school board president at Gunner for many, many, many years. Following him, my brother was president of the school board for Gunner for many, many years. My grandfather was on the school board. And daddy always taught us, you know, you serve and you give back. And you, you know, like Paul writes in Philippians, you know, you serve without any, you, you serve for the benefit of others without wanting anything back. I'm paraphrasing, but you need to, you need to give back and you need to not want any recognition. You just do your job and be a servant.
So it's clear, just in talking to you for the short amount of time that I have, you have a very strong faith.
Yes, sir.
And so would you say that God has played a very big role or maybe the role in guiding your life to where you are today?
The role.
I like it.
The role. Because, you know, as you get older, as you know, not that you're old.
We're right here together. So no, we are old.
You start getting wisdom and discernment. And, you know, it took me a long time to figure out, nothing's too big for God. Nothing's too, we always knew that nothing is too big for God. There's also nothing too small for God. Cause it took me a long time to realize this decision, whatever this decision is, you know, X, Y, Z. God does care about that. He cares about you. So go to him and say, what am I supposed to go do? And his plan might, it might not be my plan. His plan might be for me not to serve another time. I don't know. But if, if that's the case, he's got something else for me to do. So I accept it and I go on. You know, I've got, I do the daily U-verse Bible app. And back November, December, this was weighing on me and I wrote down a prayer request, you know, what do you want me to do? And over about the next week or two, there was a kind of a calmness of, hey, go run the election. I got this. Now, what I got this means, I don't know, but I'm not going to worry about it. But I'm going to do what I'm supposed to go do and, you know, still try and give the effort, but what happens will happen.
And doesn't it feel good to live your life knowing that you don't have to worry?
Ron, that's, as I told my kids and anybody that'll, you know, that's struggling with anything, you're not in control. And then when you, when you really give up control, it takes a big load off.
Life changes.
Oh, gosh. Now, I'm not, by no means have I mastered that. By no means. I'm, I'm fallible. I'm the biggest knucklehead you'll ever meet. But I try hard.
I try every day not to be a knucklehead, but I'm still a knucklehead.
There's a saying in a Bible study that I got with some guys over Friday morning. And I said, man, I'm just trying to suck less every day.
I think I want to put that on a t-shirt. I like that.
That is my mantra.
I'm not, I'm not real sure that some of the people out there on some of the Salina message boards and the political stuff right now would agree that I would actually deserve to wear that shirt, but.
I understand.
But absolutely.
But you know what? I also don't take myself too seriously. I might do the best I can. And, and, you know, you just do the best you can and every day try to help somebody. Every, every day reach out to somebody you haven't talked to in a long time. Say, man, you're on my mind. Want to reach out to you? Say hi. Thinking about you. It goes a long way.
Yeah, it does. It's, it's, it literally, you can enhance your own life and make your own life better by helping someone else have a better life.
And if you try to help somebody else, if you reach out to- And if you try to help somebody else, if you reach out to somebody, if they're struggling with something, it makes your, whatever you've got going on seem insignificant.
Very true.
It does.
Very true. Very, very true. Yep. So, so let me ask you this. How would your friends and family describe you?
A knucklehead.
You know what? I asked for that. I asked for that.
Easygoing. Uh, I like to laugh. I like to, you know, make side, I think they're funny. My daughter, you know, she goes, you're only laughing, you're the only one laughing. I go, yeah, but it was funny.
That's fantastic.
I'm serious when it's time to be serious. And the rest of the time, I'm trying to get a good laugh out of somebody or make myself laugh.
Right. And I think that's awesome. So if you did have to describe yourself in one word, what would that one word be? You can't say knucklehead.
Well, yeah. I might have to come back to that one.
What do you think? Give me, give me a one word.
Sincere.
Sincere.
Transparent.
Good, 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 good stuff.
Since, yeah, I'm sincere. I am, I'm sincere.
Yep. And, and I believe that. And in the short time I've known you, I, I would agree with that wholeheartedly. You're a very sincere person. So, uh, your first memory in life?
Ooh.
Do you, what, what's the, the earliest thing in your life that you can remember?
That is really good. And I've thought of that.
And, and I know it's been a minute. I mean, we're just talking about our age. It's been a minute.
Uh, I remember being in our house in Carrollton, in the kitchen, and mama probably washed, giving me a bath in the sink.
Wow.
I'm, I'm, there's something like that.
Right on. That's, that's back there.
Yeah.
That's back there. Cause we don't use the sink for bathtub.
No, we don't. And if you saw how fat I was, that was a big sink.
Okay. That's awesome. Sorry, I did not see that. There's the sincerity coming through.
Yes, yes.
There's the sincerity. So if you had to write a book tomorrow, what would you write about?
What God has done in my life.
Wow. Good stuff.
You know, as, as everyone who comes through this life, you struggle with stuff. And I would write about the blessings he's given me and how unworthy I am of those blessings and the struggles I faced and how turning to him helped me get through it.
I love it. I absolutely love it. What is, uh, what is, what is something that makes you nervous or scared?
Not being prepared.
Very interesting. And you rolled into this interview today and you set your iPad down and you've got a little stand for it. And I have no idea what's on there. It could be, you could be playing a video game. You could be doing a little Roblox action over there. But I have a feeling you've got notes.
I've got, yeah, I've got notes. It's just stuff that I want to make sure we've touched on. And, and we've touched on none of them.
You love to be prepared.
Well, I just, you know, if, if I'm going in, if I'm going into something that I, that I have no idea what's going to happen, I kind of want to be prepared. So I'd give it my best effort.
I like it. What, what is a, what is a good characteristic or trait that you look for in a friend?
Trustworthiness and sincerity.
I like it. I like it. Is there, is there anything that has happened recently besides when you walked up and saw me that has made you laugh? Anything that you can think of recently, you're like, yeah, that really made me laugh?
Uh, my youngest daughter, who is in graduate school at Dallas Baptist University, she has, uh, moving home to finish her last semester. And she's got this, she's got this puppy she bought a year, about a year ago, and it's a golden doodle. And that dog is flipping hilarious.
Yeah.
And it's just, it's, you look in their eye, you look in its eyes and it's like a, my, my daughter cadences, like it's going to unzip itself and a human's going to walk out. And that dog just do stuff to make me laugh.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
I love, I love animal humor.
That's, and, and a golden doodle too. That's just like an awesome dog. I have one. They're very, very, very awesome.
They look, they, she, she looks like, her name's Murphy, and I call her booger butt and banana nose. And she looks like, and she looks like, her eyes look like it's a human in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, almost like a Muppet.
I understand that. I understand that.
The dog always makes me laugh.
And for people who don't know what a Muppet is, describe that.
I think of Ralph sitting behind the piano, a Muppet, the Muppets, Kermit the Frog, uh, Muppets. I love the Muppets.
I know. And I, and I say things like that now. And I've got a 10-year-old and I'm like, oh yeah, it's just like, I might say that. It's like, like a Muppet. And she'd be like, daddy, what's a Muppet? It's amazing how much stuff you and I grew up with that, that's not around. It's not common anymore.
Ron, if I, if I want to sit and laugh, I'll get on YouTube and I'll watch Muppet Show. I'll watch, I'll watch, I'll watch reruns of Hee Haw and the Muppet Show.
Oh my God, that's awesome. I love it. Okay. Favorite character on the Muppets then?
Gonzo always made me laugh. Beaker's a goober, but he made me laugh. Uh, yeah, they're funny.
And it's good stuff. And it's, and it's wholesome.
Oh gosh, yes.
But you just don't have the stuff, that you don't have the garbage that you have today and everything.
You throw me up some Three Stooges, I'm going to sit there and watch every bit of it and laugh.
Greatness.
Yes.
Well, let, let me just ask you this. I said, I'm not going to get about, serious on anything else, but as a person who has raised kids and who's a sitting board member, and I asked you right now, what, what kind of role or influence do you believe technology, meaning iPads, cell phones, stuff like that has had on our kids?
What kind, you mean, uh, you said, you used the word role. You said, you mean, how does it, uh?
Yeah. Like, do you think that it's like, is, you know, back in our day, it was television. It was like, oh, television's going to ruin you and stuff. And good and bad from television, right? What do you, what do you think the impact of?
Impact.
Yeah. Impact of?
You know, I saw, we were down, this was years ago, we were at a continuing education class for a school board. And they talked, they were talking about how us as adults, school board members, parents, how our kids are, their noses are in those phones. And it drives me crazy when I'm talking to anybody and they're sitting there staring at their phone. It drives me crazy. They put up on, on the screen, they showed, uh, a picture from probably the thirties and there's people on a train going to work. Every one of those people had a newspaper in front of their face.
Oh, wow. Very interesting.
There's no, there's no difference. It's just what you're looking at.
Right.
So, uh, the impact it's making, for everything, to me, everything that is made has a benefit and a good benefit. And then there's that force that makes it evil.
Right on.
So is it, their, their world is different, but it's, they're, they're getting information, you know, by the minute or by the nanosecond. We had a discussion, uh, God, I'm going off on a tangent here. We had a discussion in our Bible study. There's a buddy of mine who always says, you know, things were worse than they've ever been. They're worse than they've ever been. I said, no, they're not. You just know about it.
Very interesting.
You go back and read, you know, uh, we're in Judges and Ruth right now. Uh, and you go back and read this, the horrific stuff that they were doing. Same thing's going on now. You just know about it.
Wow.
And you know about it in a nanosecond. There's nothing different. There might be more of it because there's more people. But the sin's not any worse. We just know about it.
Very, very interesting take. I like it. Tell me this. What are you not good at?
A lot of things. Uh, I'm not good at hockey. I tried playing that a few years back, thirty years ago, but I, but I, but I love playing it. What am I not good at? I cannot sing. I am not any good. I am, I'm a horrible guitar player, but I'm trying to learn. I tried to learn that during COVID.
That's good.
Uh, I'm horrible at that. Uh, I'm probably, if you ask my wife, she'll probably say a lot of things. If you ask my kids, they'll say.
So you're not doing karaoke?
Oh gosh, no.
You're not singing up and going out and playing hockey? None of those things are going to happen.
I might suit up, but I wouldn't, I'd suck.
And you could wear your shirt that says trying to suck less.
Trying to suck, just trying every day to suck less.
What, what did you, uh, when you went to college and you, you, you did your degree and you did all that kind of stuff, if you had to go back today and do it all over again, would you pursue the same thing or would you change?
I would go, I would, I would stay the same course. I would still love to have done sports medicine. Uh, I would love, if I was independently wealthy, I didn't have to work, I'd go to seminary. Just, I just want to, I just want to learn it.
Wow. Very cool.
Cause there's the academic part of it and the, the knowledge part of it that I really find fascinating.
How did, uh, speaking of COVID and all that fun stuff, how did that impact you and your family?
Uh, so I was very blessed and I had just switched jobs. I had been with the place for 23 years, went to a new company because our company got bought up by a conglomerate and started a new job and never thought I could ever work from home. But I learned how to work from home and it was one of the biggest blessings. I know there's so many people who heard, there's so many people who, you know, horrific things happened, but my little bubble, it was, it was fine.
It's good.
And, and I, and I learned to, I learned to appreciate the simple things.
Right. I, I, what, what do you think? What, what's the, the, the long-term effect of COVID on us as a society or as a generation? What do you think? Do you think we're going to come out of that having, you know, uh, learned to be better people? Are we going to, what's, what's, are we more fearful people? What do you think now?
So that's a good question. So do you remember what happened after nine 11?
I do. I do.
How long did that last?
I know. I know. It's a shame.
Yeah. So you, you look like, you, during, after COVID, these, I mean, I'm just, I'm just off the top of my head. You learn to appreciate, uh, your health. You learn to appreciate your loved ones, the people that you care about the most. And what has happened since? You're back in the same rat race that you, that you were in before COVID started.
Wow. Yep. It's, it's, it's scary. It's scary. But you know what? We're, we're, we're very, we're broken people. We're broken people, which is why we need what we need, which is Jesus.
Absolutely.
And if, if we weren't broken, then we wouldn't need him. So I think that's
Absolutely.
And I think that's kind of the key.
Yeah. We learned that our supply chain's not as good as we thought it was.
Okay. So the, the, the real, the real truth here is toilet paper is just very hard to get. So we all learned from now on, we're going to have big stockpiles of toilet paper. So right now, Jeff Gravely's house, you'll see about 47 packages of toilet paper.
I can neither confirm nor deny that, sir.
So with the Jeff Gravely interview, this particular episode, we will wrap up political season on salinarradio.com. And we're going to do a, an episode where we kind of summarize everything, the whole political season. But that's going to come out after the elections are over. And don't make any mistake, the Jeff Gravely interview is not over yet on this episode. I'm just taking a break to tell you about what's coming up. I want to thank you for listening because you make not only salinarradio.com awesome, you make Salina, Texas awesome. And I appreciate each and every one of you very, very much. It's not an easy task doing this, sitting on this side of the microphone and tackling some of these really, really tough things going on out there. It's not easy. You become the public enemy of some of the politicians sometimes. But you know what? It's worth it. I care an awful lot about this city. And I will continue doing exactly what I'm doing right now, which is bringing you the very best of Salina, Texas. And sometimes the stuff that needs your attention and your focus to ensure that we continue down that road to greatness. So tell me this, I want to know one interesting fact or something about your life that not everybody knows.
Uh, there's a lot of people who know, but probably the coolest thing that happened to me was, it was right after COVID. Uh, I was a big, my wife, uh, Audra and I were big fans of Yellowstone and they were doing the prequel to Yellowstone. And they were filming 1883 and they were filming in, uh, Fort Worth. And they had an open casting call for background extras. So I signed up for all these different roles. And oddly enough, they picked me as a background for that, uh, filming. And they, my role was a salesman.
Really?
Oddly enough, that's what I do for a living.
So you actually got, so you, so you're actually in one of the episodes?
Yeah. Well, so I show up the day of filming and it was the day right after, uh, was it Memorial Day in September? And it was 105 degrees and I'm in a wool suit. And they've got us in, the rodeo exchange was where our holding pen was down there in the stockyards. And, you know, we'd been there maybe an hour, uh, you know, get there at four o'clock to go through hair and makeup and all this stuff and stuff. And we're in a holding area and they said, hey, we need our salesman. So there's four of us, five of us, you know, uh, stand up and go to the, whoever the guy was. And they picked me and this other guy. I said, you two, come here.
Wow.
And, and they, so they take us outside in, in the street that's had been, uh, converted to look like 1883 time period. And, and they bring over this guy who pulls out of his, uh, out of his back pocket, pulls out the script and he writes down, he said, say this. And so I say it and he goes, perfect. Here's what I want you to do. He said, that camera is going to be coming right down this street. And I want you to look right down the barrel of that camera. And I want you to say what you just said.
Wow.
And I'm, okay. So they go mic us up. They put more makeup on us and I say my line with this four wheeler coming at me. And then we shoot three or four more times. And when the guy leaves, I said, who was that? Said, that was Taylor Sheridan.
Wow.
I said, didn't he the guy who wrote this? And, oh yeah, that's him.
Wow.
So I'm giving my lines to Tim McGraw. He's coming down. It's, I think, minute sixteen into the first episode. And this whole time, he's, keep, we keep reshooting. And I say to the guy next to him, I go, I thought Tim McGraw was in this thing. He said, that's him that you've been talking to this whole time?
So awesome.
I didn't realize it.
Wow. How amazing is that?
Yeah.
So was that, was that just like an amazing experience? I, I've been in a couple of little odds and ends. Nothing is awesome as that. And I loved, I thought it was great.
Oh, I thought it was amazing. It's like, you know, and all the guys, uh, you know, you've got 300, 250, 300 extras there. And they think, they start talking to me like I knew what I was doing.
Wow.
I said, dude, I got here two hours ago. I have no idea what's going on. And they said, we've been doing this for years and you get a speaking role. I go, again, I have no idea. I, I just, I got lucky. It's 100% luck. And it was real cool. And then doing another scene, there's Sam Elliott and I'm walking up to him. And I'm like, that's, that's Sam Elliott. That's cool.
That is super cool. So you were, you were talking about, uh, UNT, your, UNT alumni, as am I, uh, or, or we're both UNT people. And back in the days, when I was there, they actually filmed, I, I think the show's called Necessary Roughness.
With Kathy Ireland played, uh, was the, was on the team and Azadeen, I can't remember her name, was her stunt double.
Yep. Absolutely. And I'm, and I'm in that, in multiple different scenes.
You know who else is in that movie?
I'm, I know quite a few people in there.
You know, Bill Elliott was, uh,
No.
Yeah.
No, I had no idea.
Yeah. He got, he got, I'm, I'm thinking it was that. Yeah, I'm almost positive. He tore his knee up.
Very, yeah. I had no earthly idea. Not a clue. Okay. Wow. And he's been on the show before and I didn't know that. So kind of go back and interview him though. It's super, super cool. Very, very cool. So, and, and something else that's very interesting that you were talking about, um, I, your, your grandmother actually attended school here.
Ala High School.
And, and, and tell everybody for the people that don't know, it's actually original school over there where now the new high school is. Yep. And so that would have been back, that would have been a while back.
So daddy was born in 37, so she probably would have been, this probably would have been early thirties, I'm guessing. Maybe late twenties, early thirties.
Right.
Yeah. Cause I remember, I remember growing up in that building. I remember seeing that building at one point or another. And I can't remember what year they tore it down, but I remember seeing when that building still stood.
Very, very cool. And, and I, and it's so awesome to me that the new high school is built right there, basically on the same property, the same grounds as that original school.
And the namesake of Ala, yeah.
I love it. It's, it's fantastic. A little, little side note, I love to do metal detecting. And I always thought, wow, there's probably so much history in that dirt over there.
There's no telling.
I mean, I can't even imagine because it goes back so far. And, and I have relatives who grew up here. And I, I wish I knew where they went to school and stuff. And now they're I mean, I can't even imagine because it goes back so far. And, and I have relatives who grew up here and I, I wish I knew where they went to school and stuff and now they're gone. But I, I just, I can only imagine maybe, maybe even there, you know, maybe there.
And if what's neat is I've met you for the first time an hour ago, you know, my family and your family probably knew each other.
I know. Isn't that cool? That's, that's what makes Salina so awesome. Absolutely. How would you best like to be remembered?
A good guy that cared about people that was sincere and he made us laugh and he always had a smile on his face.
I like that. I like that. What do you, what do you drive?
I drive a 17, uh, Silverado. I've driven Silverados since 88.
Crew cab, extend cab, regular cab, crew cab.
Yeah.
Best ever, isn't it?
It was till my transmission went out a little bit ago, but yeah, it's fine. Yeah. Yeah. I, you know, I'm the type that if I find something that works for me, I'm sticking with it.
Right. Yeah. And I still, I still have my Silverado, it's crew cab also. Best thing ever. It's just, I, I won't get rid of it.
Yeah.
I won't get rid of it. My wife's like, you really need to get something else. I'm like, no, I don't think so.
I don't want a payment.
No. Well, it's great stuff. It's very, very good stuff. So if I get in your car or in your truck, excuse me right now, what radio station are you going to have playing?
You're going to have one of two things. You're going to either have, uh, the ticket playing, uh, which is sports talk radio. Or you're going to have, uh, George Strait playing or you two.
I like it. I like it. That's good stuff. That's good stuff. Did you ever play sports in school?
Oh yeah.
What'd you play?
All, uh, well, I'm from Gunner.
Not hockey.
No hockey. No. I, I, I picked that up when I was in my early thirties just to see if I could do it. Uh, football, baseball. They made me play basketball. They made me run track. Uh, wasn't a basketball guy, but I played in, you know, point guard and, and whatever. Football's, football's my passion and baseball is, I'm better at baseball, but I, and I enjoyed it, but I, and really, really love the mental part of football.
It's just absolutely, it's a, it's a big part of who we are.
Well, it's, that's indicative of Texas and we just happen to be as good as we are. And yeah, it's the centerpiece here. Doesn't mean we, uh, think less of any other sport. It's just football is, is a Texas thing.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So if you had to get rid of one state out of the country, one state, you're going to wipe it off the map. It's gone.
California. Well, and right behind it's probably New York, but.
Oh my goodness.
And you know what? That's not fair. California's got some good stuff. New York's has some good stuff, but yeah, I don't care. Yeah, whatever. I, I, should I think about that first?
No, no. I, I appreciate the sincerity. It's gone. It's out of here. Bye California. I understand. So if, are you a soft drink or a tea person?
I don't drink, I might have one diet coke every six months. I'd drink iced tea, water, sparkling water, coffee. I mean, I'll drink a few cups of coffee in the morning and then it's water.
How, how do you take your coffee?
Uh, just a little bit of Splenda, just a very little bit of Splenda.
So black with Splenda?
Yeah. Just a little bit of Splenda.
Wow. And you're hardcore.
No, not really. I mean, you know, a pack, a pack of the last one, about three or four cups.
Man. Yeah, but black, no cream.
No, 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 no.
Wow. Yeah. I don't know.
You do you, buddy. You do you. I'm not going to judge what you put in your coffee. You, you do you.
I'll have my, I'm trying to suck less shirt on as I'm drinking my French vanilla coffee. So, you know, that's, it's, it, like you said, it is, it is what it is until it isn't, right?
That's right.
Absolutely. Well, Jeff, you have been fantastic. Thank you, sir, very much. And who knows? We don't know how the election's going to turn out, but, uh, you know what? However, it is, like you said, you're not in control anyways.
No.
And, and, and there's always going to be something else. God's got a plan for you. God's got a mission for you. And I think you're going to pursue that mission with everything that you've got. So thank you so much for being here today. We look forward to seeing you again in the future. We're going to bring you back and I'm going to find out if you got those T-shirts made.
You're the one who's going to get those T-shirts made. My lovely wife will not probably allow that.
I don't think so. I don't think so. Guys, that is Jeff Gravely. And just like that political season in Salina, Texas, as far as the salinarradio.com interviews go, was over. Now, as of right now, when I'm recording this episode, the election hasn't happened. My guess is just as good as yours at who's going to win this thing. I know who I hope wins. I know who I hope sits in the leadership positions in Salina, Texas and on our school board. But I have no guarantees of who it's going to be in any case. But here's the really cool part about all of it. Just like me and Jeff talked about on the episode. God's in control. It doesn't really matter. God's got it. I think he gives us things to do. He gives us missions. He gives us purpose. He gives us things to accomplish. And for that, I'm very grateful. And as of right now, we've accomplished another political season on salinarradio.com. That's pretty awesome. But guess what? We're not done, baby. Salina, Texas is still the most amazing city in the United States and I am very biased. Happily so. We're going to keep bringing you amazing episodes. I've got to get back to my life in real estate. I've got to actually start selling some houses again, and I've got to start doing some land deals. And I've got to, I've got to get back in that game a little bit, but I'm not going to back off on Salina radio because it's just too amazing. You're too amazing. This city is too amazing. Ain't none of us going anywhere. So guys, one last time, thank you. Thank you so very much. I am honored that you spend your time listening to me. And guys, until that next episode, as I always say, stay safe. And God bless.